You're all here for the tech.
Well, he'll be out in the morning. I have never had to call another one. So it's just, it's just crazy. It's easy to contribute. So it's just a W two or whatever. It was just that, yeah, or whatever. Just stuff you have to. You'll have a view of one thing you'll ever have to do. So, okay. I mean, you don't have to do it. It's true. So, so let's see. Just go ahead and.
Right.
Yes. Great.
So.
Yeah.
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 Right?
That's what you're voting.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, that is hilarious. Where did you find that? Oh, my goodness, that's hilarious. Oh, thank you for bringing that. That's really good. Where are we at?
I want to be better than you.
Oh, pretty much.
I like that. Awesome.
Your name is your client, right? That's awesome.
Yeah. Good.
It's a fact I can tell.
Positive. It's tough. And I'm a little bit. Um, I like that. I don't think the nursing contract. Um, basically, actually, I want to add point six position increases. Because right now, we're at a point eight again.
So right here, so this, so this program increase, so one point, one point F T is going to be actually in case with point six.
Probably that. Yeah. It won't be a full one point.
Okay, so that I didn't expect. We'll make an addendum to it.
Yeah, we're just going to change what P M L is.
Okay, so point six.
Because here's the thing, even Kiel's position.
It's a point eight.
It's a point eight.
Because then, because then they can pick up.
Yeah. There's going to be less time, second person, well, wow, and it won't get as much open.
Yeah.
Can you meet on Thursday at three?
Yeah.
Yeah, Thursday, we do. Yeah, we start at one o'clock, but I just wanted to kind of hold them.
Yep.
And have a conversation. We can't do it until we have the needs established, so. Let's figure it together. If you could just meet for like twenty three or minute, I don't think it would be a long conversation.
On, did you put policy, you just?
Well, not that, we have a group within the one that's eager after already. They're strongly.
You're trying to roll this?
Oh, no, it's like now, let's go.
Okay. And then that's P A.
Right. Right, right, no, I get it. All the. I've heard you've been someone. No. Thank you.
I'll be right back.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
All right. Site three, we're going to call this meeting to order. Stand to pledge, please. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, also, I'll read our D G F school district mission statement. In partnership with communities, the mission of the Dilworth, Glen and Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, like long learners. Um, this evening, we have all board members except David Eilertson present. So Nicole Oreo, Amy Johnson, Laura, Laura Item, Ronnie Tang, Ricky Keel, and myself. Others present, we have our superintendent Tegerson with us, principals, LeFard, Rich Lee, Hilla, um, tech director, John Jacobson, and Tracy Close, and our community head director, and a few other visitors. Um, do we have changes to the agenda, Brian?
Just, um, an update on the one action item.
All right, so nine point four, our program increase, this is the Clay County Nurse, we will be making an addendum to that, it's actually going to be not a one point O position, it'll be going to a point six F T. So that is the only change. Do we have a motion to approve? So, motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Laura. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries six zero. Public comments, rebel recognition, do we have any public comments? There was no, there was no comments submitted online, none submitted over there. As always, we just want to recognize our staff, our teachers, everybody working so hard for our students during this pandemic, our administration. Um, the governor had an announcement today, so I'm sure our superintendent Tegerson will give us an update on that, but, um, to continue to work through these changes that keep coming up, um, we just really appreciate that, so. Uh, and parents, thank you for all you do for your students, we know it's difficult, but, um, we value you, and we're always here if you need us, just a reminder. I want to just, actually, I want to give one rebel recognition, um, Tracy has been doing such an amazing job getting out our communication, so thank you, Tracy. Keeping that in order for our, uh, community, and as always, if you have any questions, contact your site principals. Okay, reports, we've got D G F middle school report.
Heidi, you are up. Well, I should be struggling tonight.
Do you want to stand here or you can, just so they can hear you? Here's microphone.
Uh, tomorrow, we start our rebel success, our after-school program, which we talked about at our last meeting, and I'm excited about that. We have, um, a program for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, we have some phone calls to make tomorrow, we'll have to, we see how many people show up, and so the teachers, I thank them a lot for doing that, it's three thirty, the clock thirty on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and if they're in the building, they can stay in the building with the teacher, or they can join virtually, so we're offering both options, so that's great. Um, we're also doing spirit week, trying to keep some type of normalcy with everything that's going on, so today was Hawaiian Day, there wasn't a lot of Hawaiian here, but it's Monday, uh, tomorrow's prayer day, so I'm interested to see how many dress up as teachers and principals and all that, and it's always nice to see their, their view of what they think of public work. Um, you know, it's like, it's nice to be in that hybrid model and to have some consistency, we are still, um, trying to make phone calls and find out for those people that maybe haven't let us know that they're going distance learning, their kids aren't showing up, so today, they get phone calls about that, and just, um, are, are they, is there something that we need to provide to them, get information, have they just all let the school know? We're really trying to get on panel on our numbers of what goals that are supposed to be your silver day, a blue day, both days, or are they distance learning? That is such a fluid processes here, and flexibility of the teachers have been amazing, uh, so they might say, um, I'm home today, learning from home, and they just follow it, so super appreciate that. A big piece was last week, is remember the leadership team, Todd was on that with me, uh, we interviewed and, um, hired for Miranda's position, which is an administrative position, we're excited to have Jenny Chisholm back with us, uh, she is a familiar face to a lot of people in the D G F community, she worked at Dilworth Elementary as the admin assistant for years, and then she also worked with Mr. Tegerson in the district office, so, uh, she will start here in about February twenty seventh, I think is the date. Until then, Joe has Nikki routine, working out of the middle school office, so she's really been helpful, and Nikki F., Mary Ann, let Nikki F. to us for, um, some time, and they're both are just so good with the kids and so hopeful, and I'm very grateful, I think there's some rebel recognition right there for me, is I really appreciate that feeling and helping her in this time. So.
I'll be here shortly, because I think Wayne's going to be a lot today.
Well, and now I have to apologize, I did not see Mary Ann. So Mary Ann, our special, Mary Ann, our special admin instructor, uh, Lee is here and coordinator, and so, well, I haven't seen you in a while, forgot what you looked like then. Okay, so Wayne, you're up for the high school report here.
I'm not going to be long on this part, but. So you have a packet of stuff for me there. Um, so in the report, that's your top page, we ended semester one about a week ago, semester two started last week, and Mr. Kevin Ellingson, he's our new industrial tech teacher, he started last Tuesday with us, teaching the CAD classes, um, afternoon classes, periods five, six, and seven. So we're glad to have him here with us, and it's exciting for our kids that are there. Peer professional week is this week, so we're recognizing peer professionals in the district, uh, some activities going on in each building. Um, I met with student council last week, and you know, with the year, how it's been, we've had very little, um, quote unquote, fun activities for the kids, so I met with them, and they're, we're planning to think of Valentine's week, uh, at the end of the week, rather than having a dance night, we're thinking of a movie night in the gym. And then in March, we'll do a snow week, uh, outdoor activities, and we're already doing some discussions, considerations for prom, post-prom, and graduation, commencement kind of thing, so. Um, got some feedback from them on most things as well. Uh, this Wednesday, Jake and, uh, Megan from Lakes Country have teamed together to help us prepare some in-house technology training this Wednesday afternoon, and some of our teachers will help lead that too. So, kind of comes grassroots from the high school staff and some things that they've learned throughout the school year, and how they can share some of the things that have worked well for them, and share those ideas with each other. Um, draftings, so we order our graduation diplomas, and we're doing that this week, and they're ordered, so we'll be ready to get those ready for May and commencement. Teacher evals, our, um, tenure teachers are essentially done, we've got some non-tenure teachers left to finish up, otherwise they'll be done here real soon. Um, construction. Any permits in that, that, uh, we, it's February one, that's what I was kind of hearing, but whenever that happens, we've got the storage bins out in the back, which will be a new entrance area, and that'll be the storage bins for what's in our shop today, so. Kind of waiting, and then we're getting reports and starting hauling that stuff out. Um, and then course registrations, they'll be in February, mid, late February for next year, and we'll just see what the entrance levels are for different courses. Another piece on there is just considering the peer academy, those courses, and I've got an attachment with, with that, and I don't really want to go into detail on that tonight, but kind of an FYI of what.
Is that the color?
Yeah, it's the colored one, and that's the potentials for the next four years on there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question just about, not necessarily to you, Wayne, sorry, but in general, do we, what is the process for allowing kids to and from distance learning? Can they go at any time, or do they have to wait for like a trimester, semester, quarter type?
Uh, they both have different requirements, so I'll let Wayne go first.
So for us, it's, uh, they, they opt one way or the other, um, whether they're going to be hybrid or distance, we want them to make a choice at the beginning of each semester. And then they can opt out to distance at any time, but they, we don't let them back in until the next semester starts.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And for us, it's the same thing, they can go distance learning, of course, anytime they want, if there's health concerns, or all of a sudden, there's something that happens, they can go anytime they want, they can come back into the school at trimester grade. Then we also can give us a couple of examples from the stats that we wrote for people.
Thanks. And four hundred and twelve rolls.
I think elementary, um, we did start the year off with pretty good expectations, but Abby, my mom, I turned it up, she said this is not going to work for everybody, very great, so, um, we tried to keep them, uh, trimesters, but it's, Joe and I talk about it, we have like a situation, we have a special ed, if we're concerned about them, um, if they just need a break, we just have those conversations individually, so it's more case by case, any elementary.
Okay. And how about you, um, Mary Ann, you have six people that go back and forth, or is it three?
And contacted them and got 50 set for tomorrow, which is a huge positive compared to what we've been dealing with. And if you're not aware, we surveyed everybody last Friday, I think it was. Tracy sent that out to find out for all staff, their employees with DGF address, do you want to get vaccinated? Do you have any underlying conditions or any of those other factors? And then we have all of that put into a spreadsheet so that we can start prioritizing ranking. Okay, because we have so many open up, here's the next group that gets it and so on and so forth. Knowing that this popped up also to do something in the afternoon, we were scrambling. And the admin team, everybody, Brooke bless her heart, you know, I mean, she's coordinating getting subs and what else not. And then also working on updating this stuff. And Tracy resends the link because we ran a Google meeting with all of the employees that were available at 3:30. And said, look, if you haven't put your name in, if you haven't filled this up, fill it out because otherwise you're not going to be on the list. And then the admin, you know, I know Mary Ann and Heidi and Jake, I'm not sure who else. A group of the administrators worked with, going through the spreadsheet, started getting us the list of the 50 names. I'm talking with Clay County to get the details worked out. Brooke is updating the list on who's eligible. And by five something now, they've got the list of the 50 people. And when Brooke goes home tonight, she's contacting all 50 of them, sending them the link and they can all go get vaccinated tomorrow. So when you look at the fact that we get 50 down that way, 50 the following week, the anxiety levels, I talked to a couple of the staff members after school, was just, it was wonderful to see just how happy people were that, you know, some of this is coming far away finally. So that's a positive, that's a huge positive to me. As far as other details, COVID money, again, that's another one of those big components, you know. I'm, I'm trying to advocate that if they would allow the funds to be approached the same way we are doing. You know, we look at when we're talking about intervention needs and principals have heard this so many times, but it's kind of the way we're, we're trying to really operate. It shouldn't matter how the funds come. Families and kids don't care, just they want to know that they can get. And we don't want somebody to give, you know, some verbiage back, well, you don't qualify based on this. That sucks for any family, you didn't test outright and all that stuff. So instead, for the last two, three years for sure, in our administrative meetings, it's been, I don't care where the, I'll deal with the funding folks. You figure out the intervention services that you need and we'll figure out where we get the money from. I'll use American Indian, I'll use the achievement integration, we'll use early intervention from special ed and now we'll use COVID. So my point as the regional people and what else started to have a listen to me over the last number of days is, again, don't try to pigeonhole us into where these, don't tell that 151 finance code has two thirds of your money. 153 only has this and this and this. And all of a sudden, it's a pot of money that we've got a lot in this pot of money, but we can't use it for the things we want to do. So I think the, I think it's working. So the details are still being worked out, but to be bluntly honest, that's where I spend so much of my time right now. Is trying to advocate for that and get that money coming so that we can maximize the use of it. But we have 400 and some thousand more. So when I come to you with these positions and I say we'll run through COVID, I already know that that's going to work in COVID funds. So it will not be anything that's going to put us in a debt on budget. So when we're writing, Margot's been wonderful to work with, with Gina and Cindy. She's doing the narrative part on these finance leases. So the way it works is just like title funds and any of these other, we have to write narratives on how we're going to use them up. And they all have particular codes that you can put them into. So you gotta put, you gotta put the budget together, but you gotta have somebody else writing narratives. And I want, you know, it's so helpful when you have building principals that are helping with those narratives because they know how, they know how the intervention services are working. Margot does a wonderful job with that. So that's going well. We expect in the, you know, we're getting some little early indications that the process is going to be similar to the last set of COVID funds. But again, it comes down to all these different funding streams. Some of the existing COVID money has to be spent by fall of '21. So you want to make sure you're not writing narratives for something that needs to be spent by this point. But if the new money doesn't have to be spent till September of '22. So you gotta make sure you're coordinating all of those intervention services, all of those lovely grants. Because when we're talking about the total amount for title and all these things, we're talking basic skills, everything else, we're talking over million dollars. So it's, it's really trying to figure out how do you maximize the use of basic skills, integration money, all of those other components. And they are very lock-in once you write them up. So it's, I think, I really see fantastic coordination going on right now with that. I, compared to, compared to when I came here and seeing the work that people are doing and how that work will just continue moving on, I am, I am so proud of how everybody is working as a team on their construction updates. We talked about it at our admin team meeting today also, just so that the whole board knows. Basically, as you see things, bring them up, you know, I, we definitely have talked about the, you know, the radiators and what else not. Some of this stuff is, is just when it's going to get done. It's not if it's got to get done, it's got to get done. You know, they bring in certain contractors to get certain things done. You know, if it's a change in color scheme with title and all that, but something that's done, okay, then that's something we gotta definitely talk about with oversight committee. Because then that's going to be a change towards big time and we gotta make, and we gotta talk about how did this get selected? Who was involved in the process? You know, getting the radiators, there's, you know, we've been taking pictures of different rooms that were like, that is getting fixed, isn't it? And so then we're giving Lee and them access to the same folder. And we have a folder in the DGF bond folder that you guys all have access to. And then there's one that's just for the fixing pictures or whatever it's called. And the way that that will work, we've got one folder for Dilworth, one for Glenn. And you can drop them in there also. You, you happen to see something, take a shot with your phone, email it or, or put it in yourself and just dump it in there. Because then what will happen is as those things are getting corrected, we'll have another folder, ones that are fixed. So we, so it doesn't have 75 in each folder and you're digging through them. It's just if it's in that active one, it still hasn't been, you don't get to close that ticket, so to speak. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's going on. And then I gave the go-ahead and I told Lee and Matt and Josh from Excel. I said, look, we don't have time to wait around. Remember the original with relocation of poles, it was going to be 50 some thousand. We got it down to 31,000 now. And between the two of us, I said, look, setting up more meetings and delaying it for two, three more weeks, negotiating over that, to me is not worth it because we can't move on with the job. And now it's back to the reasonable amount that both Comstock and, Comstock was comfortable with it. GLG was comfortable with it. I met with, can't believe, can't believe his name, up at Dilworth. Peyton, thank you. I sat with Peyton for 45 minutes, walked through it with him. And, you know, you know, we, we came to agree that, you know, there's certain things, you know, you can, you want to spend two, three months trying to negotiate it down a couple thousand, you can. But, you know, trying to just assume that the utilities are going to be just the nice people and say, we're going to do this for free because the good of the community is not going to happen major companies, corporations. So, you know, once, you know, after that third conversation, I'm like, okay, this isn't going to get any low. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lose 30 more days over two, $3,000 negotiation. So if you're not comfortable with it, that's one of those, you gotta tell Lee, Brian, we're going to ring back, you'll get them, make those calls, but.
Ronnie, are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, that's fine, so. The city's not going to contribute at all though.
No, and, and like, like Peyton said, you know, this is, he's seen it before, but they haven't had this type of a, and they haven't had one of these issues because it usually isn't in older locations. But there isn't anything that's in any of their, there isn't anything in any of their contracts that can help with this situation. This is really between the homeowner that's creating it and property owners, so to speak. So we're kind of on our own with it, but the fact that they, you know, they pulled back, they definitely a double bill. So we got that part of it out there. Plus, the other reason to drop is we got the credit for the existing. So they got all of that put into that, we made sure that that was done. And that's what dropped it down to 31,000 total bill from Excel, now it's only 15,000. So, and let's see, last one on construction, revisions. They got the information back from the state, they've already done a turnaround. They were working on, evidently there's not too many revisions with it. And so they're already turning that around today and sending it back in. So I think we still are on track.
And phase two, correct?
This is phase two.
Phase two.
Phase two for both sites. So this is the big stuff starting up now. And, you know, the, the target has been February 1st. And it sounds like we're still going to be on track for starting next week. Now, that's just bringing the contractors in, starting their meetings and all that stuff and putting those schedules together. But at least, you know, the work that we know we have to, like with Jake and all the stuff that they've got to do over Dilworth with, you know, they need notification to move stuff because the media center is one of those areas they're going to work on right away. Last thing I have, as you're aware, Governor Walsh, and I haven't had time. I'm supposed to be getting emails, probably did later this afternoon, from the governor's remarks. We know that it is a seven-point plan. If you haven't heard about it, it's been named Due North, the Due North Plan. And basically seven areas that are being addressed as areas of emphasis for the new education plan. That includes academic standards. You will see a lot of reading between the lines. What I can tell you very quickly is, these are new. School safety, student safety, that's not new. But so many of them have emphasis about different demographic groups, inclusion, making sure awareness and requirements of professional development with staff to help with the awareness with the different groups. And, you know, some of us who've been working on the grants, you know, you just, you could see the writing on it because you know that there's certain emphasis coming that if you don't include this particular group in, in your plan, you're going to get interjected. And that's okay. I mean, that's what we, that's, that's a point of emphasis right now that everybody deals with. And so we'll work through that process. You know, there's, there's, one of the seven points of emphasis is to create career centers for education to help probably promote more people going into the education field. That's one of the seven. Mentorship is going to be a big component. Again, these have been there, but just the fact that they're making it part of the new seven points tells me that's where some of the, you just know where the funds are going to go. If there was one saving grace, to me, the thing that was probably, I felt the best about was they had to get down to 2.6 before they get greater Minnesota. But anyway, no sarcasm with that one, but it was career, and career tech in particular, increasing access for the greater Minnesota. So of course, that kind of gets perks me a little bit because I'm thinking, career academy, career academy, career academy, regionals, you know. It's all of that stuff that we wanted, you know, how can we leverage best to get the most bang for the buck? So again, we'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks.
Anybody have any questions?
Couple of questions on that, the survey or the staff vaccinations. Would us as a board be able to be included in that or not?
So the, you guys didn't get the?
Well, I got one today.
Okay, fill that out.
We could be allowed to.
You, you, you will automatically, you, here's, here's the way it works. Because we know we only get so many at a time, the state comes out and then the regions come out with a draft. The region, the regional draft has not been updated yet, so they don't want us putting it out since it's a draft. But basically there's a hierarchy ranking that we're supposed, supposed to go through. For instance, a couple of these easy, quick ones are, do, does the employee work consistently within six feet proximity, direct proximity of students? So you're going to have some positions that are not. So that's going to be low. I'm going to be low, you guys are going to be low. But we're all going to put in that you want it. And so then you're on the list and we just have to get all the higher prioritizations done first. And then as we get more shots, 50 at a time, we can get everybody done. Hopefully we're going to have, hopefully by the end of February, everybody's got the first votes, which would be absolutely possible. And it may happen sooner, but even they're at the point that county said there's a possibility. Because right now they have to go into the MCO tomorrow, go into one of the slots. Clay County Public Health has been wonderful to work with. I give them a lot of credit because of getting us that information as quickly as they did. And I asked for 50 spots and they said, you got it. And, you know, they only had 200. So I felt really good about, okay, maybe I complained enough. You know, but, you know, I, I, it was, it was nice. And so we got that lined up. And they were so good about it that the original slots were nine o'clock to two o'clock. And they added two o'clock to four o'clock specifically at our request to help with getting our personnel in tomorrow. So, so we got that for tomorrow. There's a possibility that if things go well, they will even come out to our sites next week, which would be fantastic because, you know, we have, we have some other people that didn't fill out the survey because they didn't have a DGF address, like our, the bus drivers themselves. Again, they're not our employees directly, the bus owners are under contract. So the bus owners, you know, we got to separate the prioritization there. They drive the buses, plus they are contracted by us. So it's, but the subs, just like the subs going in the classroom. They're working for us, we want them to be able to have a chance to get vaccinated. They'll just be lower on the priority list. But everybody will get vaccinated, it's just, we gotta just try to get as much information to people so they understand, you know, when people are going to, why didn't I make the top 50? It's like, I'm not making the top 50 folks, okay? So just, you know, let it go. We're all going to get vaccinated. Just going to take time.
I don't even want it until we get through all the superkinne search stuff. You don't want to run the risk of getting a bad reaction or something, but.
I, I thought about stuff like that, but I thought I'll never get vaccinated.
So another thing I was going to mention, I listened into last week on that construction update. I don't know what file or folder was that thing in where they showed us kind of the staging timing here coming up the next few years?
I think it's in the timeline folder.
They kind of went through what each building, which each segment in color and green.
Is that where that one was put, Jake?
I, I shared the link with the email app, I have not put it in the, the shared drive yet, so that one's on me. But yeah, you, you can view it through the email, but I'll, I'll put it in the construction folder, I'll do that tomorrow.
Is there a timeline that we can add to the construction link on the school's website?
I'll figure something out.
There are things they want. Yeah, they, they're actually putting, when we met last week, they talked about not taking a big one that we have right now that's month by month.
Yeah.
But putting more of the one page that shows here's, I think in 2021, here's summer. And that's what they were working on, none of that this week. But it's not, was, not just couldn't have it by last week's meeting.
Oh, that's okay.
But that's, that's coming, we'll put that one on.
Yeah, that would be good to put on the school website. And I know, you know, just once the snowmelt's taking pictures and just try to keep that excitement, people are excited and, you know, obviously with COVID, we don't want extra people coming in the building, which is unfortunate, but if we can just take pictures and continually just kind of, this got done today or look at this, you know, just some experience. Something to look forward to.
Tracy's the master at that and I think Mary Ann and Heidi and a few other ones are also great at, you know, they see some of that. I'm terrible at it.
That's okay, it's all right. We all have our fortes, right? It's all right.
I'll walk down the halls and just not even know who's, who's around sometimes.
Well, thank you so much, that was longer than you probably anticipated talking, so, thank you. All right, approval of our January 11th meeting, this is 7.1, do we have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second, second by Nicole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have our consent agenda, we have our claims and accounts. Laura, what are the bills this month?
It's 527,529 and 29 cents.
All right. We also have in your packet, the career report and fund total report, Minnesota with asset and max account activities account report. And then we have a resignation for Brian Erickson, care professional effective February 3rd. Do we have a motion? Motion by Ronnie, is there a second? Second, I go over here. Laura, any further discussion or questions? Are there any further questions or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, 9.1, this is our 2021 committee representatives, the packs in there. There was just one change that was made after Brooke had sent it out to everyone. I just, I gotta look through it quick, just want to see, make sure, is it, was it good? Okay, so Laura is going to step down from wellness and Brittany is going to fill in there. So I'm just going to look really clear. This all looks good. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion? Any questions, everybody is good with this? So what I'll do tomorrow is I will email this list out to all committee, our, all the principals, administration and the people that I know will run these committees. So they're aware of the, the changes and who they need to email their schedules to. Typically, some of these only meet four times a year, some of them meet more often, but I will send this out to them so they're aware of who was on committees, so they can let you know what these are.
Yeah, you could get an email.
And we'll post it on the web, we'll just update the existing.
Yep, that would be wonderful. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. 9.2, we have proclamation of peer professional week here. That's in our packet, we want to recognize all our peer professionals that help out with our students. Minnesota is a home to more than 20,000 peer professionals providing service in multiple settings within schools, including support for instruction, student activities and individual students as well as numerous other tasks that contribute to educational success. And the support and services provided by peer professionals are integral to the student achievement, resulting in even better, more effective Minnesota schools. And the state of Minnesota and the Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that peer professionals play in ensuring educational success. And the Minnesota Department of Education will celebrate the contributions of peer professionals during Peer Professional Recognition Week from January 25th through January 31st. So thank you to our peer professionals. Do we have a motion? So, motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any comments or discussion?
I'm curious what, what are the schools doing for the paras this week?
I think it's a little bit, at each site, I ask the principals and the special education teachers and anybody else who's willing to help out to get involved, so each site is doing their own thing. Today, Nikki, Akonai, we have pizzas, breakfast pizzas for all peer professionals in, not just special ed, special education, peer professionals, media specialists, so there is our peer professionals that help in the media centers, our early childhood, peer professionals, we included all of them. And so they got breakfast, water, bottled water and candy today. And you'll, Pedro has stuff planned every day. Yeah, so middle school, Margot and Joe have such candy each day at the elementary, with a big chain, as people on it at the high school. They have, you could elaborate a little bit. So tomorrow is snack attacks, a little snack. Normally we have great pop-ups and things like that in camp this year, so it'll be a little bit more creative. But tomorrow is snack attacks, we'll have different things to order, bought available in the office. And then Thursday, sweet treats, well, sweet treats for people. And then Friday, we're buying them lunch and giving them a half hour lunch break away from everybody together to have lunch. And a surprise like that. You can say right here.
Keep it under wraps.
Yeah, things like that, I think everybody's put it still on, right?
Yeah.
Well, the best one is tomorrow where the high school principal covers lunch for the paras supervision.
Sounds like excellent.
How many paras do we have? Do we have a rough assignment?
I have nine right now. Through the whole district for special education, we're supposed to have 52. And I still have three positions that aren't filled, so if we want, nobody wants to apply.
If you're looking for a job, we would love you to apply for a peer professional position.
And so that doesn't, that includes early childhood special ed here, but it doesn't include the media paras and it's not including the regular preschool paras.
Wonderful, well, thank you to all of them and have a fun week. It sounds like some fun activities you have planned, so thank you guys for doing that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.3, this is our high school course guide and I think it was in the packet here that Wayne's provided. I'm going to have him come up and talk about this.
So yeah, pull up the package for your reference, I guess, but I have, there's.
There's a cheat sheet.
There's a cheat sheet in front of it.
One page.
Yep, outline.
One page, yeah.
So the course guide is essentially the same as the previous year and then the outline I've got there will highlight some of the course changes or additions. So first one there is under art, ceramics two. So that's something this semester that we, it's a course that we've added. I gotta flip my glasses up and down here. So we didn't have that in the, in the course guide going into the year. We had a couple of classes that were drawing classes. There was a little less interest when we got there about Decemberish, so we, the art teacher, Carrie Kinsel, came to, came to me and Katie Homan and suggested the idea that there was a lot more interest in the ceramics class. So that, what we have had in the past is intro ceramics and so we created the ceramics two classes, which is just a deeper course to get into ceramics for them. So that just had more, higher interest in that. The second one there is English and that was actually changed last year going into this year. It was a kind of looking ahead and further ahead into planning for the career academy and more career pathways, so to speak, more options for kids. And so in the previous years, British Lit was the senior English course. We made it into an elective instead, and so there's a number of different pathways that students can take to get their English credit for their senior year. Science, that was a change this semester too, like the ceramics. So this year we, it started, I can't remember, it was two falls ago when we had, remember we had, we had the half-credit physics or half-credit chemistry. So this year we, we've gone through all those kids that need those credits. We had some science graduation credits that we changed a year and a half, but it was for Minnesota. So all of those kids have got those credits now. And so this second semester, we, we switched to taking that chemistry half-credit, all putting astronomy class, which is a new class. Business, this year we dropped yearbook as a course and made it an activity. And Carrie Kinsel has that now, so what that did was create two more courses for us. We added intro business and business law to replace yearbook as a course. Industrial tech, the new class that we have this semester again is CAD, computer graphing, 2D and 3D with Kevin Ellenson. And then something new this year is ECHS, that's college and high school. And it's online courses and it's through M State. Uh, and it's online courses, and it's through M State. And it's essentially like PSEO through M State, except PSEO is onsite at their campus. E is in your, in your high school site in Minnesota. So, they can take the same courses, but they take them right here on our, on our campus.
Do they, do they get, uh, they go through, do they get to do that?
They work with, they work under Key.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so those are the new, the changes to the course, uh, course guide this year. And, uh, bringing it next year, we'll, we'll see how things go as far as registration and things.
Okay.
We'll do registrations this next month, and then potential things in career decades.
Okay. What is our, how many credits do they need for graduation?
24, uh, 24.
24?
So, and that's in the course guide, just for our new school board members.
Yep.
In the front, um, in page nine, 10, and 11, you'll see, um, every year, there's been a few changes, but each class has a set of requirements based on if there's changes at the state of Minnesota, like for, for... So, um, each class has different things that they have to make sure that they acquire before they graduate, so, um, just figured, if you guys wanna, little light reading, yeah. Little light reading, so. All right, thank you, Wayne. Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. 9.4, this is the programmer increase. Um, this, we will, um, make an, uh, addendum to this, that this is gonna be a .6 FTE position with Platoon E help for an RN. Do we have a motion?
Ooh.
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Um, any more details, Brian, besides it just, it's a .6 position? When will they start?
Um, they have two candidates right now, so we're looking at within the next couple of weeks. Probably the latest president's day, he can, uh, he'll make that transition at, at that time. So, the thing with the .6 compared to the .8, Kayla does work also for the summer. Okay, and that's why hers is a .8 position. Whereas for us, the person will be coming in, it'll be seven hours a day, days a week, so it won't change for us on that. I think it's just that they won't be hiring the person to have other work outside of the school district. So we're getting a little, it was one way of, you know, there's no extra cost for the county, and made it very attractive. It's just passing that on, you're talking total dollars, um, because of the, being a .6 and only for a semester, probably talking with 25,000 too. Working on the contract details now, uh, going from just having a .8 position. Knowing that we also agreed this year because of COVID, that Kayla's gonna have to put more time in. With this second position we're allowed is, we don't have to have, if, if all of a sudden we have a cluster of them. And what's been going on is, she's had a couple weeks in a row where she's been putting 50 some hours in. And she's only supposed to be putting 35 at most. And so this whole, I'll have to pay, take a Friday afternoon, because now we'll have another RN. This is a, this is a very much a needed thing. And again, all the costs will be under COVID.
Will this be, like, specific or kind of just wherever it's needed?
No, what's gonna happen is, this way we'll have, we'll end up putting, uh, having our new RN over at the Glendon site. And, you know, back before, what was it, right after Christmas break, I think, sat down with you and Bill and just talked about that part. Yeah, this allows us to have an RN at both sites. And whether you happen to have, uh, a nurse's aide or an LPN, they're supposed to be directly supervised by an RN. So that way, we know we'll have an RN at both sites. And where we put, you know, the plan has been, because we've had more hits, that then we take our next higher level person and make sure that we got them working with where we have them. So most of the time, that would probably be stationed over at Hillworth, because we have more over there. And then where we have, the, the good thing is, now it allows Laura as the health aide to be able to make those home calls. And so that we're not taking and bogging down our RN with some of those duties. So this is gonna be a major help as we continue moving through this.
All right, we have a, uh, motion and a second, any other questions?
This person will continue again next year and will be just during the school year, I presume, right?
Yes, right now, the agreement with Platoon E is, let's do the contract this way for now. And then let's reevaluate it and then, as far as figuring how we want fiscal 22 to look like. Fiscal, yeah, fiscal 22 to look like. Because then we'll write up one contract instead of having these two separate ones, one for .8, one for .6, and we'll find out, here's how much we need at each position.
Great. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. 9.5, this is a non-certified contract for Jennifer Chisom, she'll take over the Minnesota, not Minnesota, middle school. Middle school administration, administrative assistant, I can't talk. Uh, effective February 22nd, this will be at 18:31 an hour. Do we have a motion?
Ooh.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. 9.6, this is a, uh, program increase. This is to approve the addition of an interventional, intervention care professionals, nine through 12. Wayne, I'm gonna have you come up if I see we have this. I don't think it was, maybe it was sent off to us last week?
Uh, I put it in your packet too, that should be like the first thing.
So, just give us a rundown of what this, is it one individual you're looking at?
Well, so, a couple of different scenarios. One is, um, to provide, uh, an opportunity for students that are distance learning, uh, on the off days from hybrid or for a distance emulsion model. They could come on site and use our facility, meaning the media center, or depending how many people we have. Could use the, could be the theater, um, or commons, but, uh, offering four pairs for support or supervision. Guidance, I guess, for kids that would be here that are either credit, credit deficient, failing at least one course, uh, have some wifi issues or concerns with home issues, that kind of thing, that they could come in and use their site on the days. So, four pairs for that scenario. The second one is, uh, kinda like rebel success in the middle school. 3:15 to 5:30 and then 7 till 8 PM Tuesdays and Thursdays. Two six-hour, uh, positions for teachers to, to cover that, uh, kinda like, kinda like our summer school where they guide kids, students to, uh, their, their courses and their studies. So, again, it's the same thing with the credit deficiency, failing course or, uh, those kind of things to keep them, keep them up a little faster than the class.
I like this idea of this, like the rebel success in the middle school, I think. That would be a good idea, the evening, kind of after school kind of stuff, just to...
Well, the seven to eight is primarily for those kids that, uh, do things at the school.
Yeah.
To...
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you for bringing us forward. Um, do we have a motion? Some motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, uh, any further discussion or questions?
Just a couple of points, just so that, um, the board of the stands are gonna ask some people, I don't know, there's been this rebel success, we've had this stuff going on, people entering middle school level. There's a funding stream issue, that's why it's different. We can have, and we've been, we, we, I think we've done a pretty good job on working, where it's been very, very good working with us on utilizing the ALC component. At the K8 level, you do not have to have it linked directly to credits. So that's why it's called targeted services to K8. If they just take, if they're there for the membership time, it generates the revenue, they'll support it. At the high school level, you actually have to have them going and registering for particular courses through the ALC to be able to generate a funding stream. So we haven't been able to tap in, we've been looking for different funding mechanisms to do this. And so this allows us to be able to do it. Having with the COVID money, uh, you know, we've been scrambling, we've been looking at American India, achievement integration, all those other mechanisms. But you can't go through the normal one, and that's, there is a separation, that's why the 912 is very different than the K8 funding.
So is the, is, would this just be for this year or potentially all for next year?
It'll definitely be through next year also, we'll have the support systems in place, and I would only, I would only see them expanding. Uh, part of that seven point thing with the governor this morning, was one of the seven is that we have to identify and start intervention services this summer. For all students that are credit deficient and are creating where there's gaps for them. So those plans have to be ready to go. That's why we're waiting for the, you know, the descriptions of the, where the funds can be used. Because I know we've got principals and leadership teams that are ready to, let's start planning, how is this gonna work for the summer, summer.
And are the, the students that, I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, the students that are credit deficient or they're failing a course, are the, this, are they required to attend any of this? This is just their...
Strongly, what, strongly encourages, what I used to always say is, if you wanna make sure that your son or daughter has the best chance of walking graduation. Now, we're gonna remind you of all these opportunities that we provide. At least that.
Might be a good way to, rather than take the tensions, go to this.
Um, do you have staff in mind for this already, or is this something you have to, like, hire for?
The pairs we have to open, um...
Or, sorry, the, the, like, the evening stuff?
Certified staff?
Yeah.
Same. I don't, I don't have anybody in mind right now.
Gotcha.
The good thing is, hopefully, you know, anybody with a teaching license that wants to help out with it, it's 35 bucks an hour, and, you know, it's a nice, yeah, like, one night a week. And if, if we, you know, it's the reason we put in the dollars that we did with it, uh, if it becomes highly successful, this thing's gonna get expanded. If we've got the people who are willing to do it, uh, you know, what's nice is, you got some people that are distance learning. They don't really want, you know, they've decided to go distance learning, but what if they just wanna come in for the afternoon? And we don't want them to just buzz in and out of classrooms, because that's not gonna work, you got those restrictions on limits. But at least then they can come here, and they'll know that we got the pairs here to work with. And I know in the discussions that Wayne and Katie have had, uh, with me over the last week, you know, we all know there's particular courses that are probably more apt to have kids struggling a little bit. So starting out with this, it's, all right, let's assign, let's target some of those particular classes in the ninth grade and 10th grade. Because if you already know you've got a lot of, you know, kids that are struggling that, it's not gonna change second semester if the failed person is... Because I look at a science teacher and I have teachers, you know.
So, but DGF used to have a credit recovery program during the day, correct?
Um, there, there was one, but it, it's, it's interesting because it was without an ALC. So, what would, the reason I say that is because you can do a credit recovery program on your own, but then you're not generating any other revenue streams unless you, uh... So what you're doing is, you're only able to offer during the day. And whereas if you're tapping into the ALCs, now you can do credit recovery and you can do after school programming and all that, because you know that you've got other means of getting the revenue streams into it. So, I don't know why it was done the way it was at that time.
Sure.
Um, but, you know, I, I think this will just give another, um, it'll give another layer of support.
So kids don't have, um, transportation here, do they, can they do it virtually, um, with the teachers too, like that later time?
With the afternoon thing or...
Well, yeah, like the afternoon or the evening one, if they don't have transportation?
I think you will see a lot of people like that.
Yeah.
Virtual.
I also think the daytime one is, I mean, I have, Katie and I both, and Michael too, we've both had tons of, we have a waiting list of families that want kids to come all day, like, remember the four day talk we had? I, I can almost guarantee we're gonna, we'll have a lot of kids that'll take this up.
We are really trying to gear it up to go directly to five. And it's, you know, one of the feedback from staff, and, yeah, lame people, they would really like to tie it in also when vaccinations are happening. You know, if that'll increase their comfort level for the bills.
All right, we have a motion by Amy and a second by Ronnie, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, 10.0, or we have our future meetings here, we have an operations committee meeting on Monday, February 8th at 5:00. So that will be Laura, Amy, and Nicole, you guys will be here at 5 o'clock, um, on February 8th. If there's nothing for operations, just for Nicole, since you haven't been on it before, if there's nothing, Brian will email out and say there is no operation meeting tonight. So he'll let you know probably the day before, a couple days at least. Um, and then our board meeting will follow at 8, uh, early, at February 8th, 6:00, gosh, I can't talk to me. Um, and just for the public, we are doing our first set of superintendent interviews this Thursday and Friday. Um, we will have those recorded, they will all go out in one batch, because we don't wanna put out Thursday's interviewees, so then the Friday people can see what the questions are. So to keep everybody on a click, even playing field, it will all be sent out at one time. Um, we're already working, uh, Tracy's already working on communication to come out to the district, so we will be informing the district presidents as soon as we, we'll look down to our top three, and then we'll keep everybody informed that way, so. All right, well, we have another one. Oh, we have one?
Policy, Penny, can you guys still meet at 12:30 on Thursday?
Yes.
And it won't take long, we'll just go over that red line version and we'll just have some discussion about it. So, policy meeting here, um, in the media center at 12:30 on Thursday.
So, all right, you have a time?
Uh, 6:33.
All right, you can agree, 6:33, thank you.
You need to, you want to say I'm meeting? Or, no, that'll just be a person.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be good.
I'm sure I'm here.
Yeah, that's over there.
Yeah.
Really good.
Okay.
I would, you guys, I know it's all here in session.
He's been so...
Do you want me to just hold in the mind and go?